Okay.
All right, this meeting, are you ready?
Yes.
All right, this meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for law. Roll call, please, Palma.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Clem Waslewski.
Here.
Rich Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi. Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber Nalti.
Here.
Craig Palmisano.
Here.
Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Rami Pelosi.
Here.
Joseph DiGeralimo. Okay. Ron Grupo. Michael Richmond.
Okay, this notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. This electronic meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and all rules and procedures which govern a regular meeting shall govern this meeting as well. Our goal is to have this electronic meeting run smoothly and as close to a normal meeting as possible. By joining this meeting, you have agreed to allow your activity to become part of the public record. The platform will be muted only during portions of the meeting where there is no public comment. During this public comment portion of the meeting, please mute yourself when not speaking so as to give other participants their right to be heard and to keep a proper record of the proceedings. If you want to speak, you must first state your name and have to be recognized by me. Once recognized, you may make your comments in accordance with the public decorum and rules of laws. Only one meeting attendee or member of the public may speak at a time and only after stating your name and being recognized by me. Remember, when not speaking, place your device on mute so you do not interrupt another speaker over the public meeting. Please remember to speak clearly and to limit background noise. Please isolate yourself as much as possible to ensure there is no unnecessary background audio coming through your device. If there is excess audio coming through your device or if you fail to observe public decorum protocols, the host should identify such and your device will be muted to ensure that there is better. Please be advised that the board has the right to disconnect any member of the public who does not observe proper rules of order. Clearly, your patience and cooperation is greatly appreciated. This is a relatively new platform for most of us and we thank you for your cooperation.
Rich, I think Mike's trying to chime in.
Is Mike Cristaldi here?
I'm here.
Okay, let the record show.
Muted.
Yep. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of minutes of the meeting of June 25, 2020.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Gallantino.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions, number 26, 2020, Margaret Day; number 27, 2020, Steven Mooney; number 28, 2020, Ralph Levy and Dennis Levy; and number 29, 2020, Eric Silverstein.
I'll make a motion.
Second, Clem.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Leo, you want to announce about the Oberon case?
Sure. If anyone's on for that first application, Oberon LLC, which is the one for 24 to 26 South Benson Avenue, block 125, lot 34, that's going to be heard at next month's meeting. But the applicant is going to renotice, so if you're on for that and you're within 200 feet, you will get a new notice of that. And Palma, do you know off the top of your head that August meeting is August?
27th.
27th, but they will renotice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The first case is Stacy Ryder, 422 North Quincy Avenue, block 618, lot 37, located in the S-40 district, seeking student variance relief, front yard landscaping, and possibly others, in order to expand the existing first floor deck and add a second floor deck above. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren, would you be sworn in, please?
Who?
Me.
Oh, Mr. McLaren, I'm sorry. Please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony or about the give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
It's Chris.
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board members. My report is based on the application of Stacy and Michael Ryder, 422 North Quincy Avenue, block 618, lot 37, within the S-40 zoning district, FEMA elevation 9 zone. This is a C variance for planning and zoning report. This is not a hardship case. This is a substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to enlarge a front porch towards the side yards and add second floor deck above the porch which require variances due to the expansion of a non-conforming front yard setback. The variances are identified and commented on below. Page two is the zoning chart. You'll see three items highlighted to indicate the variances. Page three of my report, under section two, are the documents reviewed, including the cover letter, planning board application, and the plans provided by Peter Weiss, dated May 8, 2020, and a survey of the property by James Bonney, PLS, April 25, 2019. The following variances are required. Front yard setback to the porch, whereas prevailing setback is 10.3 feet, 6.5 feet exists, and the proposed setback is 6.9 feet. So actually moving it a little bit further away from the property line, but they're making it wider, so it's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. The second variance that they are seeking is a front yard setback to the second floor deck, whereas prevailing setback, again, is 10.3 feet, 6.5 feet exists, and the proposed setback is 6.9 feet. This is not an expansion of a non-conforming setback. This is a new deck. And the third final variance identified is the front yard landscaping, whereas the minimum required front yard landscaping is 60 percent. Over 60 percent exists, 58 percent is proposed. So again, the variance. Sounds like a train.
Chris, Chris Balenson, that's you, the interferent, so if you could...
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just, I just turned a paper around.
Okay.
I'm motionless. Go ahead.
I want to correct the front yard landscape, and actually 50 percent exists and 48 percent is proposed. Waivers requested, there are none requested, although the survey is older than 12 months and that needs a waiver technically. Chris indicated that he will provide testimony, and I'd agree that the survey provided does give accurate existing conditions. The comments or as follows, the waiver for the survey can be granted without detriment to the land use requirements and the intent of the application. Provided that testimony, if you have accuracy, the survey is provided. By observation, the survey clearly shows existing conditions to be accurate. The required front yard setbacks to the porch is not being met based on the calculated prevailing setbacks. The porch is an expansion of the existing non-conforming setback and requires a variance. The required front yard setbacks to the deck is not being met based on the calculated prevailing setbacks. The proposed second floor deck is a non-conforming setback and requires a variance. The minimum side yard setbacks are being maintained and do not require variances for the porch and deck. The combined side yard setback is also an existing non-conforming setback. However, for the proposed porch and deck, they do not require additional variances. And although there is no dimension on the left side of the porch and the deck as shown, my scaling has indicated that they do meet the combined side yard setbacks. Again, testimony from the architect should be required. Quincy Avenue is a wider than typical street in Margate, and the intent was and is to maintain larger setbacks. That was part of our discussion last month in the zoning changes. I'm not feeling guilty, so I'll mention that. Both the C1 and C2 criteria need to be satisfied in this application. I turn it over to Mr. Balenson.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren, members of the board. I represent Stacy and Michael Ryder with respect to their application for their house at 422 North Quincy Avenue, lot 37, block 618, S-40, property is 89 zone. It's a relatively simple application this evening to expand the outside living space at the Reader's property at the first floor, which is existing small porch, and then add a second floor deck above that to match it. Variance is necessitated, as Roger pointed out, for a front yard setback. And for the front yard setback of 6.9 feet where 10.3 is required, that's an existing condition. And front landscaping, the 45 percent where 50 percent exists and 60 is required, although the lot landscaping compensates for that being over that which is required, aside from the fact there really is no more room in the front yard to add landscaping. Peter prepared the plan. You'll see that the plan was prepared so as not to create that left side yard setback or the combined side yard setback by stopping the deck and the porch short of the left side of the house. We think the variance can be granted as to not have any impact on either the neighbor to the right or the neighbor to the left, as there's driveway and ample buffering on both sides, as well as the setbacks are fairly typical on those sides. We're not creating anything that is not relatively normal in that small part of the neighborhood. With that, let's have Pete be sworn in and testify as to the plan prepared and the variances requested. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony or about the give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
The board will accept Mr. Weiss's credentials as a licensed professional architect.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you. Peter, you prepared the plan that's been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And could you speak then to the existing conditions of the property, what the readers have requested of you and what is proposed, please?
Okay, so there's an existing two-story residence on the lot. Both the building and the front porch currently encroach into the front setbacks. The landscaping, the landscape coverage right now is fairly high, 42 percent will remain more than required.
That's for the entire lot?
Yes. So if you've been by the site, you see that there's a porch that extends about halfway across the front of the building. What we are proposing to do is extend that another 15 feet to the left or the ocean side and construct a second floor deck above that. I was shrinking the deck a little bit away from the street, about five inches, just to keep it sort of an even number of eight feet. The, I want to talk a little bit about the setbacks. I just looked at this yesterday, I guess, and realized that the deck on the left side does encroach into the side setback by, I think about eight inches. And the overall combined side yard setback is coming out to about 17 and 1/2. So we do encroach into the setbacks on the sides as well. So part of the deficiency in the landscape coverage is because the house itself is a little bit closer to the street than, because Roger measures the landscaping requirement to the setback for the building, so if the building's a little bit into the front, then you know, you lose that automatically. But even at that, I mean, we're reducing the front yard landscaping because we're shrinking the width and going wider. We're reducing the front yard landscaping by about 5 percent, which I don't think is significant. So the front of the building as it stands is kind of bland, so my thinking is adding the decks and improve the aesthetics of the building, creates a little bit of depth and you know, makes for a better looking building on the street.
And in light of the fact that there is a double driveway to the right and a driveway to the left along with the setback, it's only eight inches off, eight inches off, do you think that the, there will be an impact from these deck proposals to either of the neighbors, to the north or to the south?
No.
And do you think by allowing these two decks for outside living space creates a substantial impact on the zone plan and zoning ordinance or the public at large?
No.
Why is that, Peter? And take into consideration the rest of the neighborhood, the fact that it seems that most of these houses have outside living space at the front of the house, to create that neighborhood feel, to create an area where people who congregate outside to enjoy the neighborhood?
Yeah, so virtually every house on that block has a front deck. The building to the right, which is fairly new, has a deck that extends across the entire front. And the deck to the left, the house to the left, is actually the same house as this house, it's just different siding. So yeah, that's kind of the pattern of the neighborhood, if you will.
Members of the board, the readers are here. Peter, will you testify that the survey that was submitted is consistent with the improvements that you've noticed at the property?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I don't think there's a whole lot to add to this application other than the readers are simply looking for a little bit more outside living spaces, as Mr. Reader said, a deck for her and a deck for him. She doesn't want to talk to him, but with that being said, I think it's a good application. I think it's one that really doesn't impact the zone plan and zoning ordinance. It certainly doesn't impact the neighbors on the side.
Anyone from the board have any questions, comments?
Yeah, Clem, I do. Pete, on your...
Who's speaking?
Clem.
Okay, you have to identify yourself.
Clement Waslewski. Question for Pete. You show on the front elevation an additional window, double hung window, an additional oval window, and an additional treatment in the peak. Will they actually be performed as part of this application? They don't relate to the deck specifically, but they are shown.
The, yeah, well, obviously we're adding a slider on the left side to access the deck. The treatment of the gable over top of that was proposed. The oval window was being added, that's in the stairway on the inside. And I believe...
I've asked the question...
We're adding that window too, yes.
Because they are visually an important part of this, of the whole concept, but being separate from the deck itself, they might be ignored in the final analysis. I want to make sure that they're not.
Right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Roger, I just want to clarify a couple things. So what is that actual left side dimension? Because now we have three more variances.
Pete, can you give us the left side yard setback to the deck now, please?
Yeah, I was scaling it at seven foot eight inches. And on the right side, I had 10 foot four.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the right, that's okay, but the, you needed 8.7 feet on the left to avoid a variance for combined, so now you need a side yard setback of 0.2 feet for the side yard setback for the porch and the deck. And...
Peter, should we just make it conform? Should we lose the eight inches or is that structural wise, is that...
Well, we were trying to match the width of, the second floor is a little bit smaller than first, so we're basically trying to line up the deck with the second floor.
Okay.
You know, the right side is right even with the edge of the building and the left side is even with the second floor where it pops up.
So it does make a difference, and those dimensions would be helpful then for Roger for you guys to figure out what that additional variance is in terms of this left side yard and the combined side yard.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think if push came to shove, yeah, we could pull it in a few inches on either side because we're going to have to demolish the deck that's there anyway, but you know, we're talking about a few inches here. I don't think it's significant.
Agreed. I don't disagree with that. But do we have the dimensions or he can at least, Leo can get the variance noted in the resolution?
It's a 0.9 foot variance for the combined side yard, and it's 2/10 of a foot for the side yard setbacks. And I think it looks better with the symmetry to go all the way to the end.
Maybe I missed, the left side, I have 7 foot 4. I don't know what I, did I say something different?
Yeah, it's 7.8, you said, right?
Yes.
So it's 7.4 or 7.8?
7 foot 4 inches, I'm sorry. So that comes out to, you know, 7.3 feet, I guess.
So it's 0.6 tenths of a foot variance for the deck and the porch. And combined side yard, it's 17.2, where you need the, what was it, the 18.5. So it's a 1.3 foot variance for combined side yard. All right, I'm all right with that.
Thank you. And Mr. Patterson, if you'd like that confirmed after the hearing, I mean, Peter will be with Roger to make sure that's accurate. I think the application is for what's shown on the plan, and everybody now agrees the symmetry with the side of the house is what the goal is.
The side of the second story, you mean?
Exactly right.
Got it.
If you move that in, that column will be blocking the windows on the left, so that's probably not ideal.
Okay, I agree with Roger.
Peter, can I ask a question? It's Mike Cristaldi.
Go ahead, Mike.
Doesn't that deck have something to do with the sliding door there, how it's snugged in there?
What do you mean?
Where the sliding door goes on the second floor.
Yes.
If you pull that deck in, are you going to have a little trouble with that door? You'll be okay.
No, it's plenty of room.
Okay.
Mike, I think we're going to leave it as it's on the plane anyway. Roger and Peter will make sure that the dimensions work for the paperwork.
I'm good.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, Richard, Clem again.
Go ahead.
Would the applicant consider much more enhanced landscaping than is shown on the drawings? I think board's concern principally is going to be with this reduced front yard landscape But if the front...
What are you thinking about, Clem, is it just enhancing the bed in the front?
Yeah, for instance, you've got four hydrangeas. Well, they're fine, but in the wintertime, they're just sticks. And you've got four others that are, I never heard of this bush called unidentified shrub.
To introduce some more variety into that front bed, that's not a problem.
If you could submit a revised landscape plan to Roger and let us have a look at it, I think it would help your...
Yeah, Pete has to come back with a plan showing those dimensions anyway, so that's, that can be incorporated, that's fine.
All right, and we'll leave that up to Roger, that it's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
Anyone else from the board? Right is the 21. At this point, I'm going to open up to public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, please state your, state your name, I will recognize you, and then you can be sworn in. Anyone from the public? Public portion is closed. Leo, would you, I don't think there's any other comments from the board. Would you read the motion, please?
Yes. Someone needs to make a C, a motion for C variance, really, for the following, a front yard setback to the porch of 16, 6.9 feet where 10.3 feet is the required prevailing setback. Same variance for a front yard setback to the second floor deck. A front yard landscape variance of 48 percent where 60 percent is required. A couple new variances that we just discussed, a side yard setback to the porch on the left side of 7.4 feet where eight feet is required. Same side yard setback on the left side to the second floor deck, 7.4 feet where eight feet is required. And a combined side yard setback of 17.2 feet where 18.5 feet is the required combined yard setback. The waiver is just from the submission of, they submitted a survey that is more than one year old, and the conditions will be the applicant will submit a revised landscaping plan to be approved by Mr. McLaren and any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, and the applicant will comply with any representations made on its behalf during the course of the hearing.
Roger, would you, are there street trees there, or would you just make sure the street tree requirement is met?
Yeah, it's in the report.
Got it, all right, thank you. Will you make the motion, please?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Pretty simple case here. I vote in favor. It seems to be a major improvement to the property, neighborhood. We've actually increased our light and air a little bit because we're taking out that big gable over the existing porch and putting a flat porch across the top of it. So I think it's a better aesthetic and I think it's better for the neighborhood, so I vote in favor.
Clem Waslewski?
The porch is, as proposed, a definite architectural improvement to the existing condition. There is a concern with the reduced front yard landscaping, but I think that's offset by the fact that the total landscaping is more than required. And if we do a proper relandscaped design for the front, that'll also help justify the variances. I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
Clem, thank you for bringing up that landscaping. That will make a difference. Other than that, I agree with what both Tom and Clem said. I vote in favor.
Michael Cristaldi?
I see absolutely no negative. I think Pete did a good job drawing this, pulling the neighborhood together with it. I think it's a good project. I vote yes on it.
Jim Gallantino?
I think Mr. Balenson did a good job with giving the case of, giving the case a substantial benefit with the, with the way they presented the case, so I vote yes.
Thanks, Joe.
Margaret Guber Nalti?
Yes, I certainly can appreciate the applicant wanting to expand its outdoor living space. I see that, I think it's more consistent with the neighborhood, the new plan. I don't see any negative impact on either neighbors. The landscaping variance is de minimis. I see no negative impact to our zoning plan, and I think it's aesthetically pleasing, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, so I have to agree with the other board members. Outdoor living is where we're at right now. The more we can get outdoors, the better it is. Also, the variances are pretty minimus, de minimus, so I vote in favor.
The application passes with seven votes in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, next page is Barry and Suzanne, pardon me. Next case is Barry and Suzanne Gutten, 25 North Exeter Avenue, block 206.01, lot 19, located in the S-25 district, seeking just a combined side yard and building coverage and possibly others in order to renovate an existing single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman and Board members. My report is based on the application of Barry and Suzanne Gutten at 25 North Exeter Avenue, block 206.01, lot 19. Again, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, it's the S-25 zoning district. This is a C variance, planning and zoning report... and zoning report. This is a substantial benefit variance, not a hardship variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new addition to an existing single-family dwelling on North Exeter Avenue between Vettner Avenue and Winchester Avenue. The addition proposed requires a couple of variances and will be discussed below. And actually, there is a variance that is directly related to the hardship and that's the rear yard setback. So on page two is the zoning schedule. You'll see three areas highlighted. The bottom of that page is section two is a document review to produce a report, including the survey of the property by James Bonney, dated September 22, 2017, and the proposed additions for the Gutten residence sheet A1, Peter Weiss, dated May 18, 2020. The variances required are as follows: Rear yard setback to the building, whereas a rear yard setback is 20% of the lot depth or 10-foot minimum, or in this case, that section is 16 feet. 8.5 feet exists and 8.5 feet is proposed and for a very small portion. I estimate it's about two feet. This is an expansion of an existing non-conforming setback. And again, this is related to the odd shape of that lot where the rear yard setback line is further in than it would be on the right side of the property where a bulk of the addition is occurring. The second variance required is a combined side yard setback, whereas a minimum combined yard setback required is 37% of the lot width or a 22-foot minimum. 19.2 feet exists and 16.2 feet is proposed. Again, this is as per section 175, Schedule B1, Attachment 4, and definitions of lot depth. This is a further expansion of existing non-conforming setback. The building coverage is the final variance, whereas 30% is a maximum building coverage permitted. 34% exists and 36% is proposed. Again, section 175, Schedule B1, Attachment 4. Waivers requested similar to the last application. The survey is over the one year. Again, the survey submitted does reflect the current additions, the current conditions, and the applicant is required to provide testimony saying that it is accurate. If he does, I recommend that that waiver be granted. The comments, I just discussed the survey age. The rear yard setback varies. The variance is due to the differential shape of the property and differing setbacks and a definition of a rear yard as it goes across the entire backyard. The rear yard setback has been expanded for a small de minimis portion of the building, but technically requires a variance. The combined side yard setbacks are required to be 22 feet as that's the maximum and are being reduced from the existing 19.2 feet to 16.2 feet, thus requires a variance. The building coverage for a lot greater than 5,000 square feet by default receives a lower percentage building coverage than a lot less than 5,000 square feet. The permitted maximum building coverage is 30%. 34% exists and 36% is being proposed. The landscape coverages are being met. No additions being constructed are below the BFE or DFE. The bedroom below the addition is actually having the floor raised to match the existing floors. Even though it doesn't meet the flood standards, it is greater than it is today, so it is an improvement. The property is subject to the landscaping requirements of Margate's ordinance, in particular to the street trees and shrub count. A grass governor strip is required. It appears that the driveway was converted to outdoor living space. Received permits may or may not exist. The attached garage was at some point used as a garage and converted to living space. Again, the floor is being planned to be raised. The wood portion of the side of the house was constructed over the existing driveway at some point in time. Whether approval was made or not, I don't know. That concludes my report at this time and I leave it up to the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLaren.
Hey, Chris. Roger, would you... The 10, 11, and 12 of your comments about pre-existing, what do we do about that or what should be done about that?
I'm just mentioning it because...
I can provide testimony, Mr. Patterson, that...
Go ahead, Chris.
We're just having some cross chatter on that. Okay, that sounds better. I can provide testimony for Mr. Gutten if you'd like, that those conditions predated his ownership of the property. He had nothing to do with them. And I think Pete can testify that generally their appearance lends to them being there for quite some time historically.
Just enter that in the record. That would be fine.
Okay. Thank you, Board members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLaren, Chris Ballson for the applicants, Barry, Suzanne Gutten, 25 North Exeter Avenue, lot 19, block 206, on the tax map. This is three variances for a relatively modest second floor addition on what is a one-story house on a substantially oversized lot in this neighborhood. And when I say that the variances are insignificant, I mean that because with respect, for instance, to the rear yard setback, if the addition were excited just about anywhere else in the lot, the rear yard setback wouldn't be required because the rear yard setback varies from, for instance... ...varies significantly depending upon where you are on the lot. Coverage is only 2% and the combined side yard setback deviation, again, is only a few feet, but depending on where you take it from on the lot, because the side yard setback varies significantly, there would not be a variance. But for the location of the addition, this necessitates the variances. And again, I emphasize, it's a one-story property. It remains primarily a one-story property, but for a one-bedroom addition at the second floor. Peter Weiss again is the architect and since there are some kind of nitpicky type of dimensions and variances brought about, I'll have Peter testify us in the dimensions rather than me give you one set of dimensions and screw it up and Peter give you another set like almost just that. So have Peter sworn in and we can take it from there.
Sure. Mr. Weiss, new application, so name and address, please.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Thanks.
Peter, number one, you're a licensed professional architect and the board will accept his credentials, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we do. We accept his credentials.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Peter, preliminarily, the survey that you worked from, does that replicate the improvements that you saw on the property upon your inspection when you prepared the plan?
Yes. Yes, very much.
And when I say that the variances are really driven by the location of this addition on the lot, can you help me out there and show the board or explain to the board what I mean? And what I mean is variation in the rear yard setback on this property and the side yard setback on this property.
Yeah, so this is an L-shaped lot. So on the left side, it's 80 foot deep. On the right side, it's, you know, almost 100. So our building kind of is for the most part on the smaller side, the 80-foot-deep side.
We're working on the 80-foot side, on the 80-foot side?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would argue that, you know, our addition actually complies in the 80-foot zone because we're 16 feet from the rear yard in that portion of the lot. And then when you get over to the deeper part of the lot, we're a lot more to that. So, you know, I'm not even convinced that's a variance myself, but...
Why, Peter, why is that? Because in one part of the lot, it makes... Well, it easily meets the rear yard setback and one part doesn't?
Yeah, well, the ordinance doesn't really deal with, you know, irregular lots. So, you know, if we didn't have that little piece, if that little piece in the back where it gets steeper didn't exist, we'd be fine. And all that's back there right now is a pool, so.
So the angle of the lot is working against us, or the peculiar shape of the lot is working against us in a hardship-type argument?
I think so, yeah. I mean, you know, there's no clear number here. You can say what the rear yard setbacks should be because it staggers, so.
Okay. Thank you. Now, take the board then, if you would, through what the proposal is and the variances brought about by the shape of the lot.
Okay, so the current building is a one-story building. It looks rather old. It's only got three bedrooms in it currently and the Gutten's plan to move here permanently, as I understand it. So the one bedroom on the right side was, it appears to be, or was originally a garage, and at some point, somebody made it into a bedroom. So it's still a few steps down from the main part of the house, even though it's not a grade per se, but it's still down. So part of our proposal would be to raise that a few steps and get it up level with the existing building, which, you know, even though we'll meet the flood requirements today, it'll still be a foot and a half higher, so it reduces the odds or chances that it could flood in the future. And then since we're only trying to add one-bedroom house to get it to a four-bedroom house, you know, we're putting it over the existing bedroom on the right side and we're adding one bedroom and a bathroom, and the entire second floor addition is less than 500 square feet. So it's pretty, you know, it's a small addition. And the cantilever on the right side, I could point out, is we can lever three foot, partly a cantilever three foot on the right side to avoid encroaching into the rear yard on the left side where the lot gets shorter. And that three-foot cantilever is over an existing walkway, so it doesn't reduce the... The whole addition doesn't reduce the landscape coverage at all at this point.
But it affects building coverage.
But it affects building coverage, yes. The existing building is kind of spread out on the lot because it was one-story. They took advantage of the size of the lot. So, yeah, by cantilevering out on the right side, we're increasing the building coverage.
And that's what brings about the building coverage variance of 2%, is that right?
Yes.
Good.
But getting back to landscaping, I apologize. This is, for some reason, I never shared it on the site plan for this project. So I just went and looked at the landscaping yesterday. And as I counted, there's currently 47 shrubs on the site and there is a leaping maple on the front on the left side. It's on the property. It's not at the curb, but it's there. So there's one tree on the site. And the grass strip along the curb at this particular site is only about two feet wide, so it doesn't really necessarily lend itself to adding trees along the curb. So if the board would like another tree on the site, I would probably try to put it, you know, on the lot rather than trying to put it at the curb.
So addressing Mr. McLaren's comments about the number of shrubs, we meet the number of shrubs as required by the landscape ordinance. We don't meet the number of trees and the governor strip doesn't lend itself to a second tree, so we would be willing to put that on site if the board requested, if that's okay. We'll leave that to the board's discussion, Mr. Chairman.
So I think the gist of this...
You touched upon it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think we definitely want a second tree, but would you comment on whether there's really room or not? We've had controversies before where there was room and they said there wasn't. You've been there.
For the tree, Rich?
Right. But Roger, if you feel that it can't fiddle that curb, I'll go with your recommendation.
Yeah, not in the planting strip. It's too narrow.
I didn't hear that.
Say it again.
Okay, Roger.
The governor strip is too narrow.
Okay, so then the second tree on the other side of the sidewalk, Chris?
Correct.
That's right. Pete, you touched upon the coverage there.
I'm sorry. Palm, is that Joe came in?
Yes.
Okay.
Who was it?
Joe DiDramo was here.
Okay. And Rich, Joe can be eligible for the next application, but not this one.
Okay.
I've been on since the vote of the minutes.
Oh, okay. Then you're good to go, Joe. Sorry.
Okay. Peter, you touched upon the necessity for the coverage variance as a result of the cantilever. It's nothing that touches the ground. It's the cantilever on the right side for the addition that brings us to a 2% coverage variance. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. You touched upon the rear yard setback, which you questioned whether or not is really a necessity for setback variance because of its location, while there are other locations on the site which easily would meet the rear yard setback. And there is a third setback for a combined side yard, and again, the side yard of this property varies because of the shape of the lot. Could you touch upon that, please?
Combined yard setback? Well, the existing... I mean, now we say the existing building on the left side is, you know, it's close to the property line, which is an existing condition, obviously. So since we're extending, sorry, extending to the right side three feet, that's gonna reduce the combined side yard setback. But I think, you know...
The fact is, you have a 3.7-foot side yard setback on the one side. There's not much you can do in the side yards in this property without generating side yard setback variance. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
And the side... The extent of the side yard setback variance is not overly significant. It's what, it's about three feet?
Yeah.
The deviation, approximately three feet?
Look, sucks. Well, combined, it's actually six feet, close to six feet. But then again, that's only for the depth of the addition.
Correct. The rest of the property, it remains unchanged.
Correct.
And the only variance is obviously brought about by the small 500-square-foot addition. The remainder of the one-story property stays as is, as shown on the plan. Is that right?
Yes. So I mean, you know, you could look at it another way, too. I mean, the second floor, the combined side yard at the second floor, where we're doing the addition is... I lost it. But it's, you know, it's like 48 feet. You know, we're putting the addition on. So if you kind of look at it as, you know, stuff above the roof, if you will, you know, the combined yard is 48 feet at the upper level.
Just similar in the rear yard where you have a substantial rear yard setback, it's just not right where we're doing this work. Is that right?
Yes.
Anything else you want to add, Peter?
I'm just thinking, my thinking is that, you know, the trade-off here for a small second floor addition is that the rest of the building is one-story and it's close to the ground, so it's much less volume than you could potentially build on the site if you wanted to build something new. I mean, you could build two and a half stories on a, essentially, you know, a slightly smaller footprint. So I mean, it's still a fraction of the size of the building you could potentially put here.
But in your discussion with the Gutten's and their desire to move down here to use this house to accommodate their family, to accommodate them on a year-round basis, the one-bedroom will suffice. Is that fair?
That's all they need is another bedroom, yeah.
And with that bedroom, you're able to design a second parking space, which brings parking into conformance on the property makes up for the space lost by the conversion of the garage. Is that right?
Yes.
I know I said that fast. Fact is, we bring parking into conformance. Is that fair?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we did make that one change in the site plan, right?
Yes, that was, yes, that change was made.
Mr. Chairman, it's Roger. I have a couple of questions.
Do you have a double curb cut, Pete?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Do you want two curbs?
Okay, I guess that's technically a variant. I had one curb cut, but, okay, so right now, there's a gate there. There's an existing parking space in front of the side deck, if you will. Then there's a gate that leads out of the side yard towards the street. Then we were gonna add another parking space to the right and we realized that if we just put the two parking spaces next to each other, the one on the new space would block the gate and access to the side yard and, you know, to the pool in the event of emergency. So what we want to do is just leave a, I guess, about three feet between the parking spaces. But because of that, we need a little bit wider curb cut. So I was showing a 20-foot curb cut as opposed to an 18-foot curb cut, just to accommodate basically the gate and the walkway to get to the side yard.
And that's one curb cut, correct?
It's just one curb cut. That's right, but wider, Rich.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was my question, whether that was...
I didn't... Peter said that to me the other day and I didn't include it. I'm sorry.
Roger, do they need a variance for a 20-foot curb cut?
Yeah, actually, that was on my list of questions, if that was existing or not. So it's, they do need a variance for that for two feet.
Okay.
And also, the survey is dated September 22, 2017, which is less than three years ago.
I have... Mr. Gutten is here. If you'd like to swear him, I assume he's dialed in. He can address that if you'd like, Roger.
I just want to mention that, you know, there's a pool, there's an outdoor kitchen, the whole backyard is paved. Where are we gaining the landscape coverage from 1%? Where, where are we gaining the landscape coverage from 1%?
Ow, I'm sorry.
Left side, remember the sidewalk?
Up the left side, that we were gonna take out.
And, and also, this addition is subject to the 50% rule for a substantial improvement.
Of course, absolutely.
It's my understanding that some of this work may have been done within the last seven years, which would trigger that possibility. I just want to put it out there, that could exist.
We will absolutely work a job on that, make sure it works.
Do you want Mr. Gooten to speak, Chris?
I, I think we're okay. I mean, Peter addressed that testimony. If anybody wants more specific testimony on the, on the survey, I think he'll just tell us that he has-
So you have anything else, Chris?
I don't, I don't.
Okay, any questions from the board, any other comments?
Yeah, Clem, Rich, I had a couple.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
Peter, this double, uh, can lever, both front and side, really kind of awkward-looking. What would you, you would consider-
Joe Dieteron, mute yourself, please, you're interfering. Go ahead, Clem.
One of you would consider under the side overhang, running a few partial walls up from grade to the underside of the, uh, overhang. So it would get some, uh, visual and actual support, but it would make it a little more balanced and almost look like it's going to tip over. And also, there's a lot of mass to this, uh, second-floor addition. I think if you hipped all of the roofs, got rid of that front and rear gable, it would really visually, uh, reduce the visual impact overall and specifically from the street. Almost looks like the tail's wagging the dog here. Couple suggestions for your consideration.
Thanks, Clem.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public now. If anyone, uh, would like to come or have a question, please state your name. I'll recognize you, and you can be sworn in. Anyone from the public?
Hello?
Hello, Ellen, Ellen?
Yes.
Leo, would you-
I'm at work, I have to go some squaw.
Leo?
I think Ms. Schlosser might be for another application.
Now, one moment, Leo?
Are you asking for Leo?
There's someone who wants to be sworn in.
Is there someone who needs to be sworn in, Rich? Because I can't.
This is not-
Can't do it.
She's for the next application.
Okay, I, I think the person trying to speak, Rich, is for the next application, Ellen.
I think Ellen Schlosser wants to talk about the Vendo Avenue application, if I'm not mistaken.
That's my understanding also.
Oh, okay, uh, that's not this case.
Oh, the next case, okay, I wasn't quite sure, except-
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no one from the public, the public portion is closed. If there's any, not any further comments, Leo, would you read the motion, please?
Sure, as long as, if there's no further discussion, someone needs to make a motion for C. variance relief for the following, uh, rear yard setback to the building of 8.5 feet or 16 feet's required, combined yard setback, combined side yard setback of 16.2 feet or 22 feet's required, building coverage of 36% or 30% is permitted, a curb cut variance, uh, for a 20-foot curb cut where 18 and 18-foot curb cuts permitted. The conditions will be that the applicant will add a second street tree, but it, but it can be, uh, or will be behind the sidewalk on the property. Uh, there's a, uh, there's also a waiver from the submission of the survey because it's more than a year old, and the other conditions will be anything in Mr. McClellan's report dated July 29th, unless otherwise resolved, and any applicant will comply with any representations made on its behalf during the course of the hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Tom Collins?
When you take a look at this case, to me, uh, it seems to be very de minimis. We're only talking about 484 square foot addition. It's very far from the street. It's recessed pretty far back into the property. Most of the conditions that we're giving variances for are pre-existing. I don't see any negatives to this. I like the fact that it's a stretched-out, lower property, gives more light air, and really blends itself to the neighborhood. It's an odd lot. I haven't seen a lot and a house of this configuration in a long time, and it makes it difficult to do, but, uh, and I'd also like to say between Peter and Chris, and especially Chris, it's so nice to see you back. Two cases, one hour, you're ready on money, and you know exactly what we want. I vote in favor.
Clem Wozlewski?
There's nothing here that, uh, sets off any bells. Overall consideration, it's a fairly minor addition. Certainly beats having a tear-down. I think if the applicant would consider a couple suggestions I made, it would sit more comfortably in its location. But that's their choice, yeah, I vote for it.
Richard Patterson?
Again, I agree with the prior two, uh, board members. I appreciate Clem's comments. I agree with his comments, but the choice of architectural design, I guess, is to them, and, and they're happy with it, so. But as far as the merits of the case, I, I see this as being de minimis. I, I, uh, I'm glad to see that it's this house being, uh, and, uh, with so little impact on the neighborhood, I see nothing other than to say that I approve the application.
Michael Cristaldi?
Uh, in agreement with Rich, I see no real impact on the neighborhood. It's barely gonna be seen. I vote yes on the project.
Jim Gallantino?
Yeah, I have to reiterate that what Roger said about the 50% rule, and, uh, Chris, we'll get together and talk about how they're gonna work that out. They've done some work over the past year. Um, and I, you know, this should be okay. It's just a small addition, I'm sure the cost won't be that much. And I'm glad to see they're moving down here full-time. It's a beautiful house, it could have been torn down, and it could have a big, big house built there. That would be one of the negatives. And also, uh, I like that little corner, um, of the, of the, of the lot. So the, uh, this, the, it's definitely a substantial benefit. I give my vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Yes, I agree with the other board members, especially what Jimmy just said. It's the lesser of two evils. We could be getting a very large new construction there. I think this is a modest addition. I see no negative impact, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Palmisana?
Yes, I, everybody needs and wants a new master bedroom. It's a three-bedroom house going to a four-bedroom house, and welcome to live down here all year round. And I agree with my other board members in their assessment, so I, I vote in favor.
The application passes with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you all very much.
Welcome to town, Mr. Gooten. Uh, the next case, next case is Stephen and Jamie Greenspan, 312 North Vendo Avenue, Block 523, Lot 12, located in the S-40 district, seeking C. variance relief for a lot area, lot width, front yard length, gaping, the others, in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising, and those by, have been satisfied. Mr. McClellan?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Craig Palmisana recusing himself to a hundred-foot rule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My report is, uh, July 27th, 2020, in regard to the application of Stephen and Jamie Greenspan at 312 North Vendo Avenue, Block 523, Lot 12, in the S-40 zoning district. Again, this is a C. variance planning and zoning report. It is a substantial benefit variance. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate to add a third-floor deck on a house already improved and under construction in an area where third-floor decks are not permitted. The applicant seeks other variances that are actually not required for this application. The application makes notable hardship variance, which is not the case for a third-floor deck. The other variances requested are for front yard landscape coverage and lot area. These are not variances by ordinance in that front yard landscaping is permitted to be 50% if the steps are required to reach the first floor because of BFE requirements. That is the case. The steps are required, and 50% is being met. Also, the ordinance permits new construction of dwellings on undersized lots without board approval if there was an existing dwelling there prior to construction. In this case, there was an existing dwelling, so no variances were required during initial zoning review and approval. The third-floor deck is completely unrelated to the bulk standards of the lot itself, but, uh, the third-floor deck is under construction and requires a variance. So the zoning chart is on page two. That is the only variance being required. Documents reviewed are on page two on the bottom. The variance required is a third-floor deck, whereas third-floor decks are not permitted at this location, and one is under construction, which was not approved, but they're asking for, to make it legal.
Roger, you're breaking up, I can't, I can't hear you.
There's some background noise somewhere else. We all right now?
Yes.
The variance required is for a third-floor deck, whereas third-floor decks are not permitted at this location, and one is under construction, which was not approved, but they are seeking a variance to make it legal. Again, the third-floor deck idea has been tossed around the, the planning board for quite a while, and the one proposed is the design standard that we have all been agreement in. That's the style that we would want, where it's embedded into the deck, into the roofing system, kind of behind the front wall of the face of the house. So, uh, and, and again, the other variances being requested in the initial application are not required for this application. So I want to turn it over to the applicant.
Mr. Gooten?
Yes, I'm on mute now. Thank you very much, Mr. McClellan, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Stephen and Jamie Greenspan. As Mr. McClellan points out, this house is currently under construction, and I'm sure all the board members went by to take a look. The exact house, and I see Chris is on the phone still, which is great, was a variance in 2015, same exact everything, same-sized deck, same-sized house, for a third-floor deck, which was kind of the predecessor for this block. After that variance for the third-floor deck next door at 310 North Vendo was granted in 15, around the corner, just two houses, at 9006 Fremont, same exact thing. The house with the deck cut into the roof line was the third-floor deck variance that the board granted in 2019. So what we have here is a pattern of development, at least on this block of Vendo, where if the decks are cut into the roof line and don't extend outward, the board has at least on a couple of occasions granted variances for similar properties. This one on 312 is very similar to the property directly next door at 310. I'm not sure if anything-
Mr. Goldstein, I think the pattern was that they got variances before they built the house.
That's correct. We're gonna get into that in a second. But just by way of the neighborhood development, the board had always said third-floor decks are kind of in flux, but it clearly didn't want these large third-floor party decks. And if anyone went back like I did and listened to the audio from the 2015 meeting, the board said, "This is exactly what we're looking for by way of the third-floor decks." Something that provides access for emergency personnel to get in and out of there, and more importantly, outdoor living space that's modest. The deck in 2015, although not precedential, is 6 by 12 and a half. This deck is 6 by 13, almost the exact same-sized deck directly next door, okay? Now, as Mr. Palmisana pointed out earlier, although he's not on the video now because he's conflicted, we're talking about outdoor space, that's what everybody wants, and this board has been pretty good about saying, you know, in times of what we're dealing with now, outdoor space is of the utmost importance for people because they're spending so much time at the house. Having said that, by way of background, certainly understand each case has to go on its own merits. But with regard to this block in particular, the board has seen fit in the past, one house directly next door, one house two around the corner, to grant that third-floor deck, cut into the roof line, so it doesn't stick out. Couple other things that are interesting about this particular house. Although it was currently under construction, Mr. and Mrs. Greenspan bought this house at a sheriff's sale. The reason it was up for sheriff's sale was the prior owner had obtained a very significant Sandy Grant and did not do any work. There is a very large lien by the REM program against the property, and Mr. Greenspan decided to take the chance to buy the property, tear down the existing house, elevate it to the appropriate base flood elevation, which would then allow the lien, hopefully, to be removed. So the house itself couldn't have been purchased without someone like Mr. and Mrs. Greenspan, who wanted to improve the house, of course, but also had a little bit of a risk, and still do, in the fact that their completed house will have a REM grant filed against it until they can prove that the house meets the new and appropriate base flood elevation. Okay, having said that, by way of background, Mr. Obelenis is here, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Greenspan. John is our professional, I'd like to have him sworn in, and then we can walk through the property and his design of the deck and kind of go through the variance justification. So John, if you could, Mr. Manis is gonna swear you in. Please unmute yourself and talk.
John, if you could state your name and business address for the record, please.
John Obelenis, 102 South Eighth Street, Vineland, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I will.
Thank you.
John, you're a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you've appeared before this board on many occasions, correct?
I have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for him to be accepted as a expert in the field of architecture.
We accept his qualifications.
Okay, John, if you could, walk us through the property. Let's talk a little bit, as I know the board's gonna be concerned, that the current status of the house is that it's under construction, and why there was a little bit of a time constraint to get it moving, which is why it's framed up with the third-floor deck already in place. So if you could, walk us through your design of the house and how you tried to mirror what's next door, which was a prior variance that was granted, and this board voted unanimously 7-0 back in 2015. Go ahead, John.
Yes, so originally, the design did not have that third-floor deck. We, we made the change, of course, during construction, and we followed the example of the house next door in trying to keep the, the language the same in the neighborhood. And we had a third-floor deck, as we spoke before, about it being cut into the roof line on a third floor. And what I believe helps our case is that being at the front of the house on the street side and tucked in between the left and right side elevations, that it offered that privacy to the neighbors to the left and to the right, but obviously exposure to the street side of the project. So we tucked it into the roof line, but again, allowed that privacy from, from neighbors on either side. You know, you're not looking into the yards and stuff. And this was all changed during the course of construction. It wasn't intended to just try it out and see if they can get away with it. No, the intention was that, and should we not get it approved, you know, they could certainly close it in. The framing is there to close it in, put a window where it was designed originally. But the hope is that, following the course of the trend in the area, that we would be allowed to, to do this third-floor deck.
So let's be very clear for the record. You've designed this in a way that in the event the board were to not grant this tonight, the roof line could just be reestablished, and the house would continue without the third-floor deck, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Mr. Goldstein, while you're talking about that, I, I'd like to make a comment. The, the original plans did not have it. It would have been just as easy to put this on the original plans. I don't- I don't know why the rules haven't changed yet to allow these decks. This deck is perfect. There's no question there. I don't think you need to justify it. It's what we're exactly looking for. The problem is, and we don't control the building department, but I would certainly like the board to recommend that if something like this happens, the construction be pulled until a variance is created. The problem was going ahead and doing this without a variance. I really don't think you need to justify the fact of what the deck is. And Roger, I, I thought we were changing this, but I don't know what the holdup is in getting this done, so you shouldn't even have to come forward here. But I, I just have a problem with the methodology. Mr. Obelenis, what the house was next door, he knew that a deck would fit perfectly up there. It should have been on the original plans.
Mr. Patterson, unfortunately, what would happen here is timing. And as you know, everyone's under a fairly significant time crunch to get construction underway. In this particular case, the REM grant was still on the property. Mr. and Mrs. Greenspan had to get the REM grant off within a certain amount of time from closing. They bought the property last year and wanted to get started right away so they could get at least the first floor established, and then they could apply to REM. Well, by the time we were getting ready to apply to REM, COVID hit, and there's nobody there now. The guy that's working on the file isn't answering emails. So timing being what it is, and obviously, everybody has a story. It really created a bit of a problem for the homeowners not to be able to clear that first and then start from scratch. So the idea was get started. If for whatever reason the variance is denied, the house would be a by right construction. It's something that we knew the board in the past had looked favorably upon. And, you know, in the board's own discussions, if you go back and listen to your prior third floor deck cases, all of them say just what you said, Mr. Patterson, which is we don't want these big third floor party decks. We just want something that's cut in, and maybe that the city will see fit to change that rule at some point soon. Right now it's a variance, so we were really running what I call a parallel trap. Construction along with the variance, and then at the same time, city got shut down for meetings back in the earlier part of the year, and everything just got pushed off until now. We would have been in sooner if we had that possibility.
Okay, I actually accept your excuse. I think it's a good one.
Well, I mean, it's just the truth, but.
I accept your rather, I think it's a good.
COVID has us all jammed, and we're doing the best we can, you know? So as Mr. Obelenis was discussing, and I just want to add a couple of things from Roger's report, because we knew at some point we'd be before the board for a third floor deck, John designed a house which was fairly in excess of overall landscaped area. The front yard landscaping, even with the stair deduct, is greater than it needs to be, and the house meets every other aspect of Margate's zoning code. So this is the only thing we're looking for, and even though the lot is undersized, we've managed to make this house work. John, if you could just walk us through your considerations in the design, and please, you know, don't let me take your thunder here, reiterate to the board that we were looking to do as little as possible, even building coverage is under by 3. something percent. John, talk us, talk about that as well, please.
Yes, thank you. Again, working with the site itself and the fact that it was undersized, and then working closely with the owners, that we tried to provide as much as we could with, with the pool in the backyard, you know, the, the paving. And this house also shows what seems to be a trend in the Margate area where we're, we're opening up that ground floor. Remember, we're parking under the house, and we have the, the benefit of a nine-foot first floor, keeping the height of the building at the proper 30 feet, that we're opening up that first, the ground floor to sort of indoor/outdoor paved area that, that accesses the pool, and it's used for inclement weather. So starting at that point where we have good use of the ground floor, extended patio, and the house itself is, is, is a nice home, you know, very typical in Margate where we have the living, dining on the first floor, bedrooms, second, master second, and then the typical, very typical two bedrooms and bathroom on the third floor. And the idea of adding that deck, I thought allowed for, again, that fresh air, you know, you're up in the air in today's environment where we're trying to provide really outdoor activities from the ground all the way up to the third floor, that we thought this would complete that, that access to the exterior.
And when you went to design the house, I know we discussed this in the past, you looked at the pattern of development in the neighborhood, and specifically on that side of the street, as you've got 310 North Vendome directly next door and the 9006 Fremont, just two houses around the corner, both of those houses, third floor decks that are cut in the way you designed this, correct?
Yes, yes, and we felt confident that, you know, something that we could at least try to achieve is that, again, allowing the openness upstairs and, and offering that third floor deck.
And in your professional opinion as an architect, do you see any detriment to adding an additional house with a third floor deck along Vendome around the corner from Fremont, which would have any at all detriment to the neighbors or to the zone plan of the city of Margate?
I don't think it's a detriment, again, because of the fact that it's cut in, the fact that it's near the center of the property. We're pretty far away from the neighbors on one side. We're over 20 feet away to the property line, and of course, the neighbor is even further back. So centering it, facing it on the street, I don't think it's any impact negatively to the, to the.
And you and I discussed the fact that the deck itself allows for an additional means of ingress and egress if emergency personnel have to get in and out of that third floor area, correct?
That's it. Side, an added benefit, yes.
Okay. So that being considered, along with your testimony earlier, would you say that the benefits of this project clearly would outweigh any potential negative, if there were any negative, towards any of the property owners along the street, across the street, or again, the zone plan of the city of Margate, knowing that at some point the board had considered making third floor decks a part of their ordinance?
I agree.
Okay. At any point when you were designing the house and throughout the course of construction, did you see anything that could be negatively associated with this design and construction?
No, I mean, during the course of the design with the, with the clients and stuff, that we really, it was a good effort, you know, going back and forth, tweaking the plans, you know, again, I believe in making the inside work as best as possible, and then with the inside access to the outside. So we really worked closely with, with my clients and with the builder, who had some suggestions also. And, you know, this is a result of that collaborative effort between owner, builder, and architect.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Obelenis. Mr. Chairman, I would like Mr. Greenspan, who's on the line now, to be sworn in in case the board has any questions, but I just wanted to walk through with him my earlier statements regarding the timing of which we needed to get this done and the reasons that he went ahead with construction. So I think it's important to have that on the record, if you don't mind.
All right, no, I don't mind, and I will see what we can do to get this change made because every month we have these cases that we shouldn't have to hear. So we will do what we can to get that changed.
And respectfully to the board members who I think have all done everything they can do, when the board brings this issue, I'm sorry, when applicants bring this issue before the board, we hear a few, few things over and over again. Openspace is great. If you don't have it projecting out, that's what we want. The extra means of ingress and egress for emergency personnel. And if the board keeps saying at some future date, this will end up being a non-variance. So we're coming before the board because we have to, but presumably, we'd like to not have to do that in the future, but that's up to the governing body, not to the planning board.
We will see what we can do.
Okay. Mr. Greenspan, I see, has come on with his wife. So Steve, how are you? I know you're not muted anymore. You heard our testimony and my explanation of what you've done to take a flooded out, half destroyed Sandy property with $150,000 REM lien and turn it into something that not many people could do in the city of Margate. So if you don't mind, just walk us through how we got here and the fact that unfortunately, property is under construction without the variance, but timing is of the essence for, in this case, which is actually a very big problem for you and the REM grant, correct?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Greens, Mr. Greenspan, I gotta interrupt you real quick. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, thanks.
Thank you. So yeah, um, this has been a sort of a labor of love, love over the last several months. We initially have a property, as you, as you pointed out, in a sheriff's sale foreclosure, and we saw a vision, and we, we met with the builder, and the builder actually recommended John to be our architect. And over the last, you know, just a while, we developed the, the plan. But as, as I said, we had a vision. We saw that we could make something out of something that was, was sort of a blight on the neighborhood, and here we are. And I appreciate what you've done for us, what John's done for us, what our builder Jim has done for us, and certainly understand the position of the, of the board and wanting to make this something that doesn't require a variance in the future.
Now, timing being what it is, you've got a house under construction without a variance, and you did frame out a third floor deck, which isn't really great because you've done something that we now have to go back and correct. So would you please explain to the board why we did that and how important the timing was, because we were really under the gun from the day you closed based on your need to get the REM grant removed?
Yeah, sure, and, and that's actually a, a very big concern to ours. We went ahead with the variance, as, as John pointed out, in the course of sort of looking at the property and making small changes as we went along, we decided that a third floor deck might be a, a good addition to the house. And given the timing and the need and the ability of the builder to be able to create that deck with the understanding that should the variance not go through, we were able to easily correct it and keep on track. That was our main goal. So, you know, we, we wanted to provide that extra aesthetic to the property and functionality while also maintaining and understanding that we had to go through the variance process, and that's why we're here today.
And we talked about the property next door, and I explained to you that back in 2015, Mr. Ballen is on the line here, got a variance with a next door neighbor, Jason Cohen, almost with the exact same thing you're trying to do. His deck is six feet by 12 and a half. Yours is six by 13. It's cut in the same way. And at that point, you said it was worth it to you, at least because your timing, to get the house framed, so in the event the board were kind enough to grant tonight, you'd be able to continue, and if for some reason they didn't, you could correct it and go back to a by right prop, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So based on everything, my discussion earlier with you and with John, that really the reason this is framed wasn't to try to get away with this because you knew you had to come here anyway, but it was more based on the need for speed to get this built.
That's correct.
Okay. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board, any comments before I open it up to the public?
I got it. Clem, Rich, I.
Go ahead, Clem.
I have a, a related question. John, there don't, from the drawings, appear to be any windows in that bedroom that's adjacent to this deck. Is that correct?
Yeah, bear with me for a second. Correct, that's within the, the roof line, so the only, it's the door to the front. We originally, we originally had a windows on that street side, but when that was changed to the access door to the deck, that basically replaced the window.
Yeah. Well, question for the building inspector, does that meet the building code requirement, 8%, 4%? Is he still with us?
Has Mr. Gallantino left the building?
Apparently he has.
Well, if, if he's not here, that's a, if it's not right, the building department won't let it pass, so I think it's okay if he's not here.
I'm here. I just couldn't get my mic to work.
Okay.
What was your question again, Clem?
The bedroom adjacent to this deck has no windows. It's got a door.
Right.
Does that door, in your opinion, meet the 8% glazing, 4% ventilation requirement of the building code?
Clem, the deck will have a sliding glass door. Doesn't that sort of shows?
It's a, it's a.
The deck has a door. They're gonna have to put a window in there.
They, they do or they don't?
They do. Clem's right.
Fine, that's something you require, absolutely.
No problem with that condition, Mr. Goldstein?
Not at all.
Anyone else from the board? All right, at this point, I'm gonna open it up for public comment or question. Ellen, if you're out there, now's the time to speak. Identify yourself and you'll be sworn in.
Hi, I'm Helen Chilostree, 309 North Vendome in Margate.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, my question is, is these, they went before and got the permits back in February. It's not like it was a surprise that 310 had a third floor deck. What they, I, I'm just upset because they went ahead, and I, I understand about the REM. I, I, my house was flooded out. I rebuilt right after Sandy. I understand exactly what you're going through, but you just don't go ahead and start and build it with the assumption that, well, everybody, you know, they did it next door, they did it around the corner, they went through the proper channels. You, you got your construction permit in, in, in February. You should have gone before the board before then and, and planned before, not afterwards.
Ellen, you're just.
I mean, that's just upsetting.
That's, I understand. That's exactly what I said, and the board agrees with you.
I, I mean, I mean, you know, it's, it's just really upsetting. I mean, I don't, if, if they did it the proper way and, and submitted the plans and done it that way, we, we all could do it, but now it's, it's already three quarters of the way built, and now they're, they're coming before the board saying, asking forgiveness, you know, instead of permission, which is not acceptable. You knew the house want, you wanted the deck, you know, you should have planned it that way, and if you didn't like it, then you could frame it in, but instead you did it the opposite way. I, I just don't understand, you know, and, and it's just a little upsetting. Everybody else goes before the planning board and gets what they want, you know, they don't go before the planning board afterwards. That's all.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you've been listening, this, this concern has been raised, so we didn't ignore that, we didn't ignore your point. Is there anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Mr. Patterson, can I speak briefly?
Yes.
Do I need to be sworn in, Leo?
Are you, are you speaking just as a witness here, these, Chris?
Yeah, just as a neighbor.
Yeah, Chris, what's your address?
221 North Vendome.
Okay, and do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, thanks.
The question is, was this, was the property cited? Is that what generated the appearance for the planning board?
There's been no citation, no.
It was, it was voluntary appearance?
Correct.
Then I have no, I have no problem with it. I have no issue with it. Secondarily, though, I don't think it's appropriate to lay on the lap of the planning board the REM declaration. It's not a lien. It's a declaration. It's, it's, it's to the property. It's not to the people. It's not, it's not the planning board's problem that they bought a property that has a REM declaration against it for somebody else who absconded with the money. That's not a justification. I don't, I don't think it's right to hold that to, hold the planning board's feet to the fire to justify this variance because they took the risk and bought a property with a REM declaration. We all understand that as soon as they show the, as soon as they show the building department or the state, the CEO for that property, that gets removed. And that, that, that could be done two years from now. There's no deadline. So, I mean, it's, it's, that, that's unnecessary. The fact is, third floor deck should be approved. This is a perfect example, one that should be approved. I don't have a problem with it, but the justification should be along the lines of planning zoning justification, not what was offered. And that's not to you, Eric. That's just for the board's certification. That's all. Thank you.
Chris, and I appreciate it, and we're, we're doing everything.
Eric, Eric, I, I understand, understand what you're gonna say. I appreciate it. I've said what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Just so you know, I listened to your case in 2015 and tried to mirror it. It was excellent and got approved, so I'm following your lead.
I have no criticism whatsoever of what you've done.
All right, I'm following you.
Goodbye, goodbye.
Thank you.
Listen, this, this, I, I want to comment here too. This board seems to follow the ruling that. ruling that with these after-the-fact cases, if we would not have approved it in the first place, we'd be pretty adamant about not approving them after the fact. And on the other hand, this is one that would have been approved, you know, theoretically, would have been approved in the first place. So, I think the board would be stepping out of bounds to say, out of spite, that we're not going to approve it. And again, this is something I will see if we can expedite getting this, this ruling worded, so we have the deck set back in and whatever, get it done, and prevent this from happening in the future.
That'll be done. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy for the applicants. I can't say enough how much it's important to take this COVID thing into consideration, because meetings do get canceled. Initially, I wasn't tasked to do anything until very recently, and it wasn't until during the COVID situation that we put the app in. This was not some planned attack, and somehow we were gonna predict that COVID would jam us up and we'd be doing this now. It's a bad situation all around. And maybe the REM grant isn't a justification, but that, with COVID, with the property next door around the corner, it's all just a big mess, and we're trying to make it as, as great as possible for Margate with this deck. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else from the public out there that would like to comment?
I just want to reiterate the fact that these plans were, the permit was granted back in February, and they didn't have any, you know, they, they didn't go before the planning board, because if you look at the plans, it says "not permitted," and they went ahead and built. And then they turned around and decided they wanted to. They knew there were decks all around, they knew about Jason's deck. So, make up your mind and make a decision, please start building. I mean, just because people can't make up their mind when they want to build, doesn't give you the right to say, okay, well, we'll go ahead before the, the planning board after the fact. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Ellen, you're reiterating what we've said, but would you suggest the board, out of spite, turn this down?
I just, I don't suggest that the, the board turn it down, but I think there should be some type of, of, of citation issued, because if it were for the fact that you, you rushed it through right now, because all this stuff happened on, in July 20, in July, and you, you know, you rushed it through to get it done, I mean, I said, it, it's just not, it's just not fair to everybody else who does the proper, who follow the proper rules. And, and the fact that.
If you listen to my statement when this case started, I would recommend that if people did this deliberately, that we halt construction until a variance is done. So, we are taking this into consideration, nobody's disagreeing.
But that's just it. There haven't been any, there haven't been, I haven't, I looked at all the construction information, I haven't seen a framing, a final framing. I haven't, all I saw was a final for the foundation and for the footings, that's it. There's no final on the, on any, on any of the framing, it just went through. And I got that open request back on the 26th, and I went through everything. So, how can you tell me that, you know, that it's, everybody knew about it. Nobody knew about it, because there's no framing, there's no final on the framing.
Nobody said nobody.
Come on.
They voluntarily brought this. Okay. Thank you for your comments, ma'am, it's not, it's not. All right.
Yeah, just one thought of thing, and I understand that Ellen's upset about this. And the reason there isn't a final is because the applicant didn't attempt to close it out as the third-floor deck. When we talked about this, I said, you're doing this at your own risk, and for whatever reason this doesn't get approved, you're gonna have to change it. So, there isn't a final, because to the extent they needed to make renovations to what's there now, they would do so. You know, it's, it's not a case of, we're doing this, and now we're saying, you're somehow prevented from telling us to change it. If the board were to deny it, the board members know that the applicant would have to change it. There are many cases that come before the board, and many that don't, that don't get permits at all, and they just get caught later, and then they have to go back and change their construction. In this instance, the applicant isn't here because someone caught them, and they came in and said, okay, now we're gonna fall on our sword. They came in because they're at the point where they have to finish construction and don't wish to do so until they legalize what's there. So, I know it looks bad to Ellen, and I understand that she's across the street, so she sees what they're doing, but it doesn't change the fact that if the board were to say no, it would be a house without a third-floor deck. We're not making the argument that what's been built now prevents the board from saying no. The argument is, the benefits outweigh the detriment, based on everything else, especially the surrounding neighborhood properties that have been built, and the other variance that have been granted, that this is warranted. That's all.
Hey, man.
All right.
Good night.
Anyone from the public else? All right, public portion is closed. If there's no other comments from the board, Leo, would you?
I have a question for Jim Gallantino, is he on?
Go ahead, Tom.
Jim, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, yes. Go ahead.
All right, quick question. Just based on what Chris Ballinson said, did you discover they needed this variance by changing plans, or did they come to you and tell you they needed it?
They came to us.
They came to you. That was Jim Gallantino?
Roger.
That was Roger.
All right, I asked him, Gallantino.
I, look, the only, the only thing I heard was Craig told me about the third-floor deck, and I think Roger and I talked about it, and next thing you know, they came to Roger and got a review of the zoning.
So, they got caught. Okay, thanks.
I got one for Eric. Eric, if you came to me and said, would you build this deck, what would my answer be?
Well, I would assume you would say, well, that's a theoretical, I, hmm, I don't know how to answer that, Mr. Cristaldi. Here's what I think you would say. I don't want to close this permit out until it's 100% legal.
Thank you, I'm done.
So, the permit's not closed out, and when it's closed out, presumably, this construction will be 100% legal, one way or another.
Let's move, Leo, would you read that motion, please?
Yeah, and, and just to echo some of Rich's comments, I certainly don't mind the questions being asked and the background being provided, and I think it actually makes sense. But the board should really view the application from a land use perspective. You know, you don't want to, you can't, the board can't take spite against someone just because they built something and they're coming after the fact. But in the same breath, they shouldn't be rewarded also, not necessarily in the context of this case, but shouldn't be rewarded in the sense, if the board knows it's gonna cost a lot of money and they feel bad that someone's gonna have to take something out, that shouldn't be rewarded with a grant. So, it should be just viewed from a purely land use perspective. And that said, someone needs to make a motion for C. variance relief to, to permit the third-floor deck where they're not permitted at this location. There are a couple submission waivers. The conditions will be, the applicant will add that window per Mr. Wazleski's comment to comply with building code, and the applicant will comply with any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, and any representations it made during the course of the hearing.
I'll make the motion. Second, please.
I'll second it.
Tom Collins?
Should have been a simple case, but I think everybody knows that I'm the only one on the board that doesn't believe we should have third-floor decks throughout all of Margate. I just don't think they belong. They belong in sections, I think they belong in certain neighborhoods, on the beach, on the bay, but not at 300 block of Vendoom Avenue. I just don't see it. I would have voted no if it had came through the first time, and I would vote no now.
Clem Wazleski?
Well, this is unusual, I agree with Tom. I vote no.
Richard Patterson?
Well, I mean, disagreeing with them. I, I feel the third-floor decks, the muted third-floor decks that we, are, are not a problem. The, the arguments that I've heard against them are people peeping at their neighbors, that you could do just as well peeping from a second-floor deck. I, I think our proposals for modest third-floor decks are fine. I don't know why it's taken so long. I know we've made some other minor changes, were things that stopped a lot of things coming before the board, but whatever. I'm sorry it had to come to this, but again, and I, I agree with Tom, if, if he would have voted no before, he should vote no. Yes, and I would have voted yes before. If, if memory strikes me, I, I think Clem and Tom voted yes for the one next door, but that doesn't matter. They voted no here. I vote yes, I don't see a problem.
Michael Cristaldi?
It's a tough one, because they shouldn't have built the deck. They should have, before they started, at least had the application in, and then take the chance. I mean, they're there now, and I agree with the third-floor decks. I like them for egress for a fire department, and whatever's needed for emergency. There should be some kind of, I don't know, some way we can go back on the builders, because I'm tired of hearing that in town. Go ahead and build it, they'll forgive you. It just, it's annoying. I'm still gonna vote yes on this thing, but I'm not liking it. My vote is yes.
Jim Gallantino?
So, let's get the record straight. There was, we haven't done any framing inspections on that building yet. So, technically, the city hasn't stepped foot into that structure to determine what exactly is built. So, would, would us, you know, there's 70 projects going on in town. We try to keep an eye on everything and keep an eye on code enforcement. Like Roger and I today, had to go tell a guy who was putting up a six-foot fence that he couldn't do it. So, it's just a revolving, things are revolving all the time in a city, and it constantly needs to be monitored. Not, not that that has anything to do with this case, but, but it does. The benefits of the case are, there's a deck right next door. And, you know, it's hard to say no when, when we gave a variance for somebody back in 2016 for the same thing. And I agree with Rich, we need to get moving with the proposals for the changes to the, to the zoning. And for that, I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernalti? Margaret Gubernalti?
I agree with Kimmy Gallantino as well as Michael Cristaldi. I do not have an issue with the third-floor deck tucked in as it is. I think we should move forward with the third-floor decks. I agree with Michael Cristaldi in that, you know, they're asking for forgiveness after the fact, although Mr. Silva, who I saw today, said he was able to, if disapproved, take that thing down immediately. So, I vote in favor of the application, and I wanted to wish John Ovalenas a happy birthday as well.
70 years old. 72?
Just a kid.
Remy Pelosi?
How do you brought that up, Rich?
Oh, come on.
It's my turn to talk.
Lay my wife, I said, I'm 71, which is seven plus one, which is eight.
Happy birthday, go ahead, Remy.
Happy birthday. I agree with Ms. Gubernalti. I am, have no issue with this deck, so I vote to approve.
The application passes with five in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, everybody. Happy birthday, John.
Happy birthday, John.
Thank you for laying the groundwork.
Nice guys, thank you.
Hi, Leo.
Thank you, happy birthday.
All right, we got, so the meeting is not over. If anybody is not involved, you can sign off now, but the, the meeting will continue. We have some old business. Steve, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, Rich.
I know, maybe eight months ago, we've kind of lost track of things with COVID and with everything else going on, but we had a forestry plan that was accepted by the city and adopted by the city, and they, the city manager suggested that the board look at it to recommend or not that it be incorporated as part of the master plan, and there's benefits for doing that. So, I'd like to turn this over to Steve. I don't want this issue to go on any longer. And there's actually two issues, adopting the forestry plan, and also, we talked before about restricting, cutting trees down on properties, and I think we would run into all kinds of legal problems if we did that on people's private property. But the city, the governor strips, and maybe partway onto the front lots of people, is actually city property, and we would like to talk about not being able to destroy trees on city property. So, Steve, would you take over and bring that up, or discuss that?
Thanks, Rich. Yeah, this all came about because of all the trees that have been knocked down in the city, and a group of people wanted to do something about it, try to, try to prevent it. So, they came up, and they adopt, and they came up with the forestry management program. And we all received the, the, the plan, and it's basically is a, is a plan of what to do with the, the street trees, you know, who's responsible, what should happen to them, and so on. So, we wanted to get a tree ordinance protection to try to stop some of these, or make it at least a little bit harder, and we, and we want to be reasonable, too. We don't want to make it impossible, it's because tree, you know, there's a lot of issues with trees. So, Rich Deeney asked us, he had five steps for, five, to sit, what do you say? He want to make a, make us a decision on whether we accept the master, accept it as part of the master plan, acknowledge it as a separate document, and make part of the review process for applications, modify, three, modify in any way, then accept it as either one or two, four, reject it as written and return with direction to the Sustainable Margate team, and five, acknowledge with thanks to the Sustainable Margate, with no further action desired at this time. And this, this email came out February 13th of this year. I reviewed a bunch of the emails that go on, that went on from 2016 while this plan was being implemented. There was, seems to be concern about, I recall an email with the zoning officer not being included in the plan. And I want to make it clear that the zoning officer should have absolute jurisdiction over the plan, and that the green team should, is just an advisory group, because the zoning officer and Public Works is more familiar with this, and he should absolutely have jurisdiction over this plan. So, yeah, the green team is appointed through a resolution, it's not part of any municipal services, so they don't have any power, and this stuff needs to be enforced. But anyway, I would like to bring it up to us, for us to go over the plan, and see if we want to take any one of these actions, so we can get this to bed, and send this back to Rich Deeney, because he wants to make it a part of the public record.
And this, to, to state it again, this is not something we're recommending the city approve. The city has already adopted this. So, what I would like, and everybody has had a copy of this now for eight months, which should be plenty of time. This was sent out, was it February, or at some point, all the, the management plan, everything is in the hands of the board members. And I think at the next meeting, we should take a vote on whether this should be adopted as part of the master plan, and that the, I think what Steve was saying is, the green team, this is not something the green team could go around and enforce. This is something that Roger, as the city participant, or the city planner, should have, be in control of this. The green team is advisory. This is not giving them any power, and the city's already accepted this. So, I would like to add this to next month's agenda and vote on it. We're not voting this now, I'm just making that suggestion that we bring it up next month.
Rich, I, I was also thinking, should Eric have to go, would he need to go through this, so he can make sure that there's nothing in this plan that would be detrimental to the planning board?
Eric who?
Me, Leo.
Leo.
Not Eric, sorry. Leo, Leo, sorry, Leo.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But I think. Yes, yeah, yeah, I think that would be part of it, I think Leo's, as, just as part of his job, should be looking at it to let us know if there's any problems with us taking action.
Yeah, and then, and then we could hopefully move forward to some sort of a, a plan where you have to at least apply for an application to remove a tree or, or something, some, come up with something, I'm sure.
On city property, on, on city property. What happens is that, and it's, I think it's not so much with people building their own homes, it's the, it's the spec construction that just tears it down because it's easy and they can not have to move around it and worry about destroying it when they move in and it's a, it's a shame being deforested.
Exactly, yeah.
Hey, Rich, go, Deidre, I have a question. You know, I, I know in my neighborhood, I, I've advised a few people that they wanna take a tree down, that they really should replace it. So the question is, when this, I had to review what was given to us a while ago, to make sure if there's a person decides they wanna take the tree down, they can take it down, but they have to replace it with another tree, if it's diseased or it's dying, or do we need to get somebody to come out and look at that and make that approval?
Exactly, that, I think that's part of it, it's not a matter of if a tree's falling down or if a tree's dying and has to be removed, but there needs to be some sort of action that if somebody has a, a tree that's eight feet around, a beautiful elm tree on their curb and they just take it down without permission, there's gotta be some repercussions, so. Yeah.
Uh, Rich?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
I also wanna bring this up too because one, one of the benefits of having an ordinance forestry plan is the New Jersey Shade Tree and Community Forestry Assistance Act, which gives us liability, which gives the city liability protection from trees.
Obviously, good, that's, I wanted you to bring that up, that there are benefits to it, I don't know if there's grant monies or whatever, I don't like grant monies, but the fact that we get protection, there are benefits to having this accepted as part of the master plan. So with that in mind, I think, Pam, if you would put this on the agenda for the next meeting, so it's publicized and with that said, unless there's any other business. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, just so you know, and I've talked to you about this before, I've found dozens and dozens of inconsistencies in that forestry report. I don't mind accepting it and acknowledging it, but I think that if the city's gonna do anything, Roger, the city, it's not the, not the forestry report, it's not the green team that should be telling us what to do. This is not a good, good report to accept as part of the planning. Everybody really needs to read it thoroughly and.
This has, this has been accepted by the city and as I said, the green team will have no power here, the green team is advisory. So if you have complaints about the report, it should be brought to the city fathers.
No, no, it's, that's not true, if we acknowledge it, then we're saying that that should be enacted and there's a lot of clauses that should be stricken from that report before.
Okay, well, you can bring that up next month when we discuss this and vote on it then.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Cristaldi?
Sir, I make a motion, second that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, Rich?
Yes?
You wanna open up to the public, there's, see if anyone wants to say anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, meeting not adjourned, is there any one from the public has any comments or questions on anything? My apologies.
It's okay.
Public portion is closed. Being no other business, I, and a motion being made and seconded, I adjourn the meeting.